Is Channel 5 good to go? Yes. Council President is, we're going to start. Council President is delayed at the airport. Airport Board went long. So we're going to start. He's going to catch up. Councilmember Stratton is upstairs. Watch, there she is on the screen. Hello. And Councilmember Bingle is absent. We're going to start. Welcome, everyone, to Spokane City Council's study session. And we're going to start with short-term rentals with Donna and Amanda. Welcome.
Hannah Lee, do we, we still need to share?
Nope. You're good.
And just make sure you speak into the microphone, both of you.
Good morning.
You have to share.
So I'm Donna DeBiem in Development Services Center, just separate from Planning Services, but we've been working together on the process throughout here since we implement the code. They write the code. So it's made sense to collaborate on this. Just a little background, short-term rentals have been regulated since 2015, and they are processed through the Development Services Center. So when someone's applying for the permit, it goes through our department. And so we, we have visited this within the last few years. I think the big takeaway was that we needed the data to back up any code changes that we were proposing. So first, we're going to go over what that data has shown us and how we got there. So at the end of last year, we did go in contract with Granicus, which is a company that helps with compliance monitoring for short-term rentals. They do the communication with the property owners and operators. They provide the city with weekly data updates. And they're basically our, our resource for locating the short-term rentals in the city. Some of you may or may not know with those platforms like Airbnb and VRBO, they don't, they don't give you the address. So they have been fairly difficult to track when they are out there being advertised. And so this company has done a great job with providing us the data and the updated data for figuring out where these are because we, as you'll see through the data, we know they're not all being registered. So that's kind of our, our big issue that we're facing today. So since 2015, 219 short-term rentals have been permitted, but currently only 44 of those are actually active with the city. So that means they've applied and are, they don't expire until the end of the year, or they've actually renewed their existing license. And so we, we know through the Granicus data that there are 666 short-term rental units out there being advertised in the city limits currently, and 50 of those are within the last 30 days. So being that it's getting to springtime, we know that this is a fluctuating industry and that we will start seeing these listings start ramping up again with all the major events coming in the city of Spokane. So this is just a map that Granicus provides us showing, you know, where do these exist? And it's pretty clear that they're, they are all over. There's, there's a dense amount towards the downtown and Lower South Hill because that is where a lot of the activity is taking place when visitors come into town. They want to be in the core. They want to be in a walking, walkability neighborhood. So these are just the, the general patterns we've been seeing. Granicus also is able to break it out based on how many bedrooms are being rented out in each, in each rental. What's the property type? Is it single-family? Was it multifamily? And the room type, are they renting out just individual rooms or are they renting out the entire home? So this, this is valuable information if you ever need to see in the future. It's consistently being updated. So we, we do have access to this now, which has been helpful with figuring out what appropriate code updates are necessary. And this just shows the listings over time. Like I said, it is a, it's, the industry is always fluctuating. Obviously during COVID, then the rentals went down for obvious reasons, but now we're starting to see them ramp up. This, this does also capture long-term rentals, but they do separate out the short-term, knowing that our code calls short-term rentals anything less being rented for less than 30 days at a time. So they will be easy to track and differentiate throughout the years when we're, when we're getting this updated data. So for data, that's what we have. Like I said, it, it is consistently updated on a weekly basis. So if you ever need to know numbers of that week, we have that data available now to you. Yes.
Do you, do you have the listings of those 666?
We do. Yep. So they, they, and I'll, I guess I'll explain further about what, what they actually do. So we are going to utilize them to monitor these listings, clarify in our system whether they are actually permitted or not. If they're not permitted, they will send a notice. So in that correspondence, we're working on right now, like, what's it supposed to say? Because we want to make sure it's consistent with our typical code enforcement language and everything. But they, they will be sending the notices saying, giving them this grace period to become compliant and who to contact and, and so forth. But we do, we do have a list. It's, it's in a spreadsheet. We, we essentially sent them our parcel data, and so they, they put that in their system. And so everything's itemized by address and owner. We're currently having them split it up to show how many are in each neighborhood. So we're going to provide them with our neighborhood boundaries because I think that that would be valuable to see how many are in each individual neighborhood.
Can you send the whole list to council?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Any other questions as far as the data?
It's not so much the data. It's kind of taken off Councilmember Cathcart. We discussed a month or so ago what the procedure is as to, on recouping the licensing fees that they didn't apply for over the last few years. Have you guys come up with a draft proposal on that yet?
Not on retroactively addressing if they have been operating without a permit. Only, it'll take some time to figure out a route if that's the way we want to go to, to find the proof that they were advertising, I suppose.
Yeah. And I'm not talking about how to investigate them, but I'm, before you send out your notice, I think we should be super clear. If you're, if you're out of compliance, what you need to do, not just sign up, obviously, that's good, give them a grace period for that, but what they need to do voluntarily for paying back. Because otherwise, we're telling all the people who did pay that you didn't need, you shouldn't have if, because we're not going to try to collect it. So I really want to make sure that we have that clearly established before we go out and vetted and all, you know, discussed and all that, so that we don't change in the middle of the compliance process.
Is that just business license?
Yeah.
Okay.
Essentially, right?
Just business license? Or would you want the permitting to? So the business license and the-
Is there two fees?
Yep. So you, in order to apply for the city's short-term rental, we'll call it a permit. That way, it doesn't get confused with the-
License.
-business license. You do have to already have a business license. And so that is one thing that we do check when they sign up. So this would be in addition to-
What's the permit cost per year?
$150 for the first year, and then the renewal fee is $100.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't, I didn't realize I had to do both, but I'm talking about both, so.
Okay.
I have a question about, you mentioned this took effect in 2015. I actually worked on it in 2010. So did, did council at the time not vote on it or?
That's my understanding. I, I had just started that March of 2015, and it went into effect June of 2015. So I'm sure it was a long conversation. The industry was certainly picking up at that time. I would say between 2013 and 15. But the, the city didn't adopt actual regulations until 2015 specific to short-term rentals. We've always had bed and breakfast. Those are now limited to just historical structures. So I think this code was created in order to accommodate that, that shared economy that was, that was coming. And so-
So do you think that what we're proposing right now is on a par with what we're asking the hotel and motel industry to pay?
That, that's the goal is to, because that, again, I wasn't a part of the initial adoption as I had just started, but I think that it did stem from that industry wanting them to be on an even playing field.
Yes.
And so any changes that we're making are certainly making sure that, that we're not taking that away and that they are meeting the same standards as the, the hotel motel industry.
Does, does that include safety regs? Okay. Good. Thank you.
Yep. We've added that in.
Are you going to go through those changes?
Yes. Yep. Amina's going to step in.
Yeah. We wanted to give you the data first before talking about what the changes are being proposed as. So just to give you an overview, the way the short-term rentals right now are structured, the permit is there's a type A, there's a type B. Type A is kind of what you would think of as your typical Airbnb, VRBO rental where someone's house, either a room or the entire building. As Donna said, that's $150 for your first permit and then $100, $100 renewal. And then the type B is actually a type 3 conditional use. It's a lot closer to a bed and breakfast in some instances because we wanted to make sure, again, that they were at least being somewhat regulated in the same instance as bed and breakfast and hotel motel. So that is differentiated from type A because they do allow for commercial meetings. So like your weddings, your banquets, fundraisers, that sort of stuff where someone might pay money. And then the, the fee is obviously much different because of the application type. The renewal is going to be the same as long as you stay current. It would be $100. So that's what it is currently. And then also, just to note, they are only allowed in our residential zones right now, which if you, we'll just go back. If you look at the map, we know that they are operating in areas that are not residentially So last year, we had started working on basically a surgical text amendment that would create a path to compliance for the existing short-term rentals that operate outside of the residential zones. We had proposed just some small tweaks to the code that said that they would be allowed wherever residential uses are allowed. We got as far as a January Plan Commission workshop, and we're told we needed to look at more comprehensive changes. So we went back to the drawing board internally and started looking at how we could do that. So the proposal today is what I would call a suite of changes. So it's not surgical in nature. It is a very big rewrite. As you will notice in your packet, there's a lot of underlining and strike-throughs. And I just wanted to highlight, we did try and go back to the Housing Action Plan, and also we made sure to try and align as much as possible with the implementation strategies from council's Housing Action Plan implementation plan. So the, the big takeaways, I would say, for the way that we've drafted these changes is that we want to create a path to compliance. We know a lot of the short-term rentals operate outside of the zones that currently permit them. And then the big thing that we've done with this rewrite is we've created a maximum or a cap on the number of short-term rental units depending on if you're in a residential zone or anything else. So commercial, retail, neighborhood, commercial, that sort of stuff. There's going to be a cap, and that does include an accessory dwelling unit. So if you have a lot that has one, you have to factor that in. We did carry through the intent, which is if you are in RA or RSF and you have an ADU on your lot, it does need to be owner occupied. So that's six months or more of the year that you're living there. And it doesn't matter if it's the ADU or their primary home. It just needs to be owner occupied. That way, we're trying to mitigate for the, the impact of short-term rentals taking over long-term housing options. The other thing that we did in this intervening year since we took the previous text amendment to Plan Commission is the building official and fire marshal worked really closely together to come up with some internal ways of looking at this. Often, these are already in residential structures, whether it's like a multifamily building or a single-family home. And the way our code is structured right now is you would be required to go through the change of use process, which is financially prohibitive. I would also say, and Dermot made this point really well, it doesn't necessarily make sense because the structure is still residential in nature. We're not really changing the use, even though the way that the codes look at it says it needs to go through a change of use. So we have a kind of new policy about how we look at that in the code, and it just depends on if you're in the residential zone and a multifamily building or if you're in a different zone. And I'll go over that in more detail. Another thing that we've done is we're going to add a life safety compliance checklist. So that's going to be filled out by the property owner. It needs to be notarized because we're basically putting the liability on them that you have made sure you have, your egress is not blocked, you have, you know, smoke detectors, all that sort of stuff. And that becomes a part of their permit. And then, so the fire department is starting to do annual building fire safety checks, and this was a great time to kind of piggyback on that. So in our discussions with the change of use, we also talked with the fire department about adding on, so when they do those annual inspections, they will also be inspecting for short-term rentals, making sure that they are complying with our regulations. And so we've added in some fees to cover for their staff time. So the way that we structured this is instead of type A, you're a short-term rental in a residential zone, and instead of type B, you're a short-term rental in any of our other zones. This outlines for you the caps on the number of short-term rental units. So for duplexes, detached and attached homes, it's just going to be one. Because we wanted to kind of limit the impact on neighborhoods and residential zones, if you're in a multifamily structure, we've put it at a 20% of the maximum for the units in the building. And then if it's not fire sprinkled and you want to have a short-term rental, you're going to need to come up to code because we want to make sure if someone's coming to visit the city of Spokane, that they're safe when they're staying in a short-term rental. Yes.
So on that, you say come up to code. Right now, we don't require single-family homes to have fire sprinkling. So what's the code they're coming up to?
So, so this would just be for the multifamily structures. So if it's, if it's got three or more units and let's say it was built prior to the building code requiring sprinkling, we would require them to sprinkler.
But outside of being short-term, if they don't have to fire sprinkle, we're still going to require them to fire sprinkle?
If, if they want to do a short-term rental.
Hmm. Okay.
Amanda, could you explain the reasoning for that? Because when we were working on this, I'll explain my version. You can debate it, dispute it. When we were first working on this, we agreed that people who are just staying for a night or two aren't as familiar with the structure. That is why we thought it would be best to sprinkler it, so that trying to get out of a strange place if there's a fire or smoke, that you get some, some headway. In other words, you have a fighting chance. And this was something Amina Hotel would be required to do as well.
Right. So a hotel or motel structure would be fire sprinkled.
And it wasn't for individual homes, but for those multi?
Right. This is for the multifamily structures. And I mean, to be honest, it really comes down to life safety. If that building were to be built today and then also do a short-term rental, it would be required to be sprinkled. So in some ways, we're looking to try and make sure that the building stock is safe and up to date.
So in a, in a Boca development with four townhomes attached, would we require sprinkling right now?
So townhomes are different. So those are reviewed under the International, oh shoot, International Residential Code. That's instead of the International Building Code. So attached homes, literally a single-family attached home that's on its own lot, doesn't require fire sprinkling. It does have a firewall for separation purposes, but if we're talking about-
But, but, but under this, you're saying they would require to have fire sprinkling, correct?
No. So an attached house wouldn't be required to sprinkler because of the way that the building and fire code reviews it. If we're talking about a, a single building with four units on one lot, the, both the fire and building code see that as commercial and a multifamily structure. So it'd be required to be sprinkled.
Under existing code?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then we just wanted to clarify the language that we don't want people to alter residential structures to look non-residential in nature. So like no commercial signage, no giant streetlights or anything like that, just so it's clear. And we don't mean this to conflict with anything else. So like, for example, if you had a home occupation, you know, and you had a sign for that, as long as you're meeting our regulations, that's fine. Similarly, we just felt like it was a good number. Fire and building both felt comfortable. We kept the, the cap at one in the attached, detached, and duplex structures. And then we increased that total amount in the other zones for the total. So instead of being 20, it's 30%. And for anyone who's thinking this is kind of wonky math, we also have details in the code that says you can round up. So if it's like 3.2, you can round up to four for the short-term rental units that are allowed. This one, for the, the multifamily structures, if they are not fire sprinkled, they would still have to go through the change of use process. That was something we went back and forth with building and fire on, and this, I think, makes the most sense just given the use and the buildings and the zones. Also, 30% was really a number that the fire department felt comfortable with as far as not requiring a change of use. So if you, so for example, if you don't hit 30%, you wouldn't be required to do the change of use. That's when it kicks in. So it's, it's really, it's structured relatively the same between the two zones except for looking at the impacts to the adjacent properties. We have been working on this draft. Uh, okay. It's out of order. Sorry. We've been working on this draft, and Council President had also asked us to add in an excise tax. So I tried to break down for you. We have proposed increasing the fees. Currently, it's 150. We've also split it up so it better aligns with the way we're looking at it from residential to non-residential zones. So we're proposing $200 for residential zones, 300 for non-residential zones, and then $150 annual renewal if you're in the non-residential zones. And then that fee for the fire department, it's a, it's an existing fee, and what they've done is just tacked on that their short-term rental inspection would be included, but it's $150 an hour. I might look to Elizabeth on this one. The excise tax is, it's capped based on our other lodging taxes. And so what we're looking at is $2 per night, which would be collected by the platforms and then remitted quarterly. They would still be subject to the lodging tax. And then the one thing I did want to mention is there's legislature right now that's being reviewed. I think it's scheduled to go to the House Committee next week. But it's, it's looking at a higher percentage. So they're proposing up to 10%. It wouldn't be subject to the same caps on lodging. And then it does specifically designate how the revenue would be used. But I might-
And I'll interrupt just so people, I mean, you're the, you're the ones doing the work, but it's at my request. My theory is that we are expanding the ability to do short-term rentals. The result, resulting consequence is there will be fewer units available for regular people to live, and so that we should impose a tax on that that would then go to create affordable housing. That's the, that's the theory on it. But there's limitations on what, my original was 10%. So we're, we're way below that.
So I, I'm wondering, so is there another fee in addition? Because your first slide talked about a fee on gross receipts, and this sounds like it's more of a sales tax than a fee on gross receipts. So I'm, can you clarify?
Let me, let me jump in on this one. There's a little bit of, I'm still trying to track down and go through the tentacles of what exactly we collect and how we collect it. So we do have authority under state law to collect the 2% excise fee for short-term rentals like we do with other lodging. We have various revenue sharing agreements with the PFD and with the county for the various taxes and fees that we collect on lodging and for the TPA, which is the tourism promotion area. So a lot of what's in the law, it appears we're already doing. So what we were looking at is making the statute very clear that the 2% lodging fee that's allowed under the RCWs is applied to everything, including short-term rentals as being specified. So that's the amendment on that, that particular provision to make that very clear because under the TPA agreement, it's for 40 units or more. There's a few other carve-outs as to, that maybe would exclude a short-term rental in a residential neighborhood or something like that. So just to make it clear that everything that's an overnight lodging is included in that 2%.
But in terms of the, the actual percentage charge, that's not on, on the revenue from them, is it? Or is it on what the, the customer is going to pay?
It's an excise tax. So it's a, it's a gross revenue tax to the, the person who does the business.
So how does that not violate 21.6 in our charter?
Which is the-
Ban on income taxes?
Income tax.
Which is, which would also ban BNOs and-
This is not based on their income. This is based on the business activity that's occurring within the city.
But you say it's based on the revenue, which would be-
But it would be like Nordstrom's, selling shoes. That's the business that they have, that they're conducting, and they're subject to the BNO tax on that.
State BNO tax. We don't have a local BNO tax. It'd be prohibited to have a local BNO tax.
Right. So this is a-
It's not prohibited to have a local BNO tax.
It, under 21.6, it absolutely is.
It's a, it's an excise tax on the business itself that is allowed by the state to be used by the city.
Right. And the city has prohibited the use under our charter.
But it's not the city's local BNO tax. We're basically using what the state has put out there for us.
So the state collects, and then we get from the state?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that might be an end round around our-
Yeah. Because it goes through the BLS system.
Interesting. Okay.
So I mean, that's, that's how it's, and that's how it's currently done. So all we're doing is changing the definitions to include the short-term rentals. That's the proposal at this point, specifically.
Can I get a, is this documented somewhere? I'd like to get a copy of the legal documentation on that, just so I better understand it.
The legal document on, in the statute?
Just, just what we're doing. Yeah. The analysis of what we're doing.
Still working on exactly what we're doing.
Still in the process, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's surprisingly complex. We didn't, when we first started talking about it, we was like, oh, we should just look at this excise tax. And then it turns out, there's all sorts of laws and side agreements, so it, but Libby is delving into it.
Well, it seems like it should be easy. We should be able to say, you know, what do we assess? What do we collect? And where is all that? And it probably is. It's just I'm not sure I found the right person to actually give me that information in a user-friendly way. So my hope is that in the next week or so, we'll get that information, and then I'll be able to tell you where, where things are coming from and where they're going. So, okay. So the other piece that we added was a mirror of what Seattle had done back in 2017, which is a $2 fee on the platform for every night that they book. But with the pending legislation, ESSB 5338 on the proposed excise tax, that may change. So depending on what happens with that, that may be a better option for the city.
Before we go backwards, does anyone have other questions?
On the fire department's safety review, the fee you've attached to that, I'm getting concerned, the last time that fee was reviewed, so is it really at cost? And do we want to put something in this that we don't know if it's actually covering the cost of the service that will be provided?
I mean, we did discuss this for several months with Lance, although, yeah, I wish he was here to answer that better. I did recently, before we came to study session, I did double-check with Lance that he felt comfortable that that would be able to cover staff time. And what I would note is it's a per-hour fee, and it's a minimum. So if it takes them longer, presumably, like, they should be recouping the staff time?
And is that only on short-term rentals, that 150 fee?
So we tacked on language for short-term rental inspections onto existing building and fire safety inspections that is existing in code. So they would, you know, if they're going out to do, say, a, a final for a billing, they could do it then, although these are probably for pre-existing structures for short-term rentals. But it's, it's basically built into how they do their inspections.
Okay. I just, the, the last thing I would add is I just, there's a lot that I have concerns about, but, but the thing that I think most that I would just beg us all to, to think strong about is the ADUs. I really think we need to exempt ADUs from this because ultimately, we need ADUs to get built. And the more onerous we make it, this is the whole point of why we did all the changes we did, the more onerous we make it, the less likely we are to get them built. And those ADUs that are built even for short-term rental purposes can eventually be used for long-term rentals. We need the stock.
Just to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, Councilmember. Do you mean exempt an ADU from the, the maximum limit of short-term rentals that are allowed or from owner occupancy?
Owner, owner occupancy in particular, I think, is probably the most important thing that needs to be removed. But, but I would say anything that creates a barrier to somebody constructing an ADU needs to just be exited, in my mind.
So you would want us to remove the owner occupancy from RA and RSF?
Yes.
Because it's, it's not required for all of our other zones?
Yeah. We don't, we don't require it for a base ADU now. We made the very conscious choice to remove it, so I don't, I wouldn't add it back in for this. for this. It just...
But she's saying it's just for the two zones, not...
Right, but it's 80% of our city is essentially those two zones. Maybe not 80, but a high number.
Uh-oh, here comes Spencer. Oh, we really need to double-check. Sorry, sorry.
I just want to clarify, in the ADU code updates that we passed last summer, that's actually an existing provision within the ADU code. So we would not only need to change the short-term rental code, but that would be an amendment to the existing ADU code.
The owner occupancy?
For, for a short-term rental, only. So the, the ADU code, when we updated that...
Right.
We did remove the owner occupancy for long-term rentals, but there is a provision in there that, that stipulates that short-term rentals have to be owner-occupied.
I'm, I'm remembering that concession now, now that you're saying this.
So I just wanted to point that out.
I would still implore that we change our minds on that, but, but point taken.
Understood. I just wanted to point that out.
I would ask that we, let's talk about that, because the impact on a neighborhood, if you have both as short-term rentals, could be significant. And I know because I lived through it, so it can be burdensome.
Well, just to give you an idea of what we're thinking as far as timeline, Donna and I are going to do a virtual open house, so we'll send that out to the Shaping Spokane Housing List Serve. That way, people are aware. And then we're going to do an internal city review, just to make sure, you know, taxes and licensing staff, anyone else, if they see anything glaring that might impact their work, they let us know before we actually start the public hearing process. And then we're going to be doing an open house in person at the downtown library, April 11th. And the thought with that is, I definitely want to make sure we include the currently active short-term rental permit holders and just get their feedback on this.
Could you also include the Motel Hotel Association?
Yes, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. In my brain, I was just thinking they are automatically included, so some of the other people we would reach out to would also include Visit Spokane, because they have noted interest in this, and yes, definitely the Hotel Motel Association. There's some other people who have kind of spoken up throughout this Shaping Spokane Housing project in regard to short-term rentals, so we would also include them.
Thank you.
Have we made an effort to, to communicate directly with those 660-some folks that we know have short-term rentals with what we're proposing to get their feedback as current operators?
Well, so we, we just got the list maybe three or four weeks ago. Like I said before, we weren't able to identify them because the addresses aren't available. So that, that is the idea. Now that we have all of those, it'd be, we would send that out just to let them know this is coming. We, we just don't want to bombard them, obviously, with the letter, you know, saying that they're going to be shut down, because that's, that's definitely not the, the message that we want to give them, so they'll definitely be included.
Even just a postcard with a QR code where they can access it and...
Right.
Reach out to us.
But just to be clear, they're out of compliance right now.
Correct.
Yeah.
But I'm just going to repeat my thing. I, I agree that we need to get it all figured out and then talk to them once, otherwise it's going to get really, but I really, I don't know if we need to have it in the ordinance, what the consequences are, if you're getting licensed now and you've been operating without a license, but whatever that is, needs to be super clear, and it needs, it doesn't need to be punitive unless then they willfully continue after the 60-day grace, but they do need to make up for what they did. What we do as far as proving or enforcing and doing that, that's kind of a different conversation to me. I think we should just say, this is the expectation, and then they can, you know, people that maybe didn't know, whatever, they could say, oh, of course. I mean, they made plenty of money during that time, so it's a very small amount of money back, but I just want that to be clear. Otherwise, I feel like our doors are going to be knocked down by the people who have been paying. In fact, I've been getting the emails from people of like, we're paying, we're doing everything, and you're not enforcing the people across the street. We are finally now doing it, and I know, Donna, in particular, you have pushed this, like, get this information, let's, so you have been a great voice, but I just want to continue that through. So, thanks.
Is there, is there any reason that the, the data side of this, because I, I know you talked about how we're going to have like a subscription service that's going to track all this, but is there any reason that couldn't be sort of incorporated into our overall rental registry that we've recently created, so that, you know, and it would just be denoted that this is a short-term rental and it's, or, or this serves as a short-term rental? I'm just curious if we could fold all that into one database, essentially?
I mean, it's definitely worth exploring. I don't know enough about the process with the, the rental registry at this point to know if, if they could be combined. A lot of times, we're finding a lot, a lot of landlords are doing both, and so I, yes, I do think that would make sense. The idea here is that you, you would be doing a short-term rental permit, even if you did this one time out of the year. If you, if you rented for Bloomsday weekend, you need to pull this permit. Whatever you do the rest of the year, that, that's on you. So I think there, there potentially could be overlap there, I'm just not sure logistics at this point, how that would work. Again, the data is pretty new to us at this point. I'm just feeling lucky that we have it, we have the numbers and everything, so it's a great idea, though.
How is it, as far as the information we had for all of you, were there any other questions that we didn't address?
No, but I just want to tell my fellow council members, this is the third time in a very short amount of time that we are finding out that fees weren't being paid, license fees weren't being paid, whatever it is, and I think we need to really start exploring what else. I really appreciate you all working on this, because it kind of opened that door wide open to say, we're not enforcing this. So I would ask, especially our finance chair, to, let's, let's dig deeper and see what else is out there we're not enforcing, or so far behind inflation that we need to catch up.
Thank you, Councilmember Kinnear. Our policy advisor, Chris and I have been talking about that, ordinance on mandatory review of fees at least every three years, and as you suggested, maybe an audit of our fees that have not been looked at, so we can at least set a baseline going forward, but they need to be reviewed, and they've been obviously slipping through the cracks, and I think the city's paying for that now.
Just checking, Councilmember Stratton, since you're remote, did you have any questions?
No, I do not. I was just listening to the outreach piece, and thank you for the, showing us the next steps and how you're going to reach out and make sure the community knows what's going on.
Great.
Council President, I have a quick question. So how will we, how we know landlord rental Airbnb, short-term rental, will we kind of really know what the, if there's an overlap? How will that kind of intersect for me?
Unless we get long-term rental data like we have here, I don't think we'll really know for sure, unless they're, they're declaring it elsewhere. Again, this, this data was already as hard as it was to get, because the addresses just aren't available out on these platforms where they're renting them. Long-term landlord situations might be similar. I can't think of right now whether addresses are disclosed on rental websites for long-term housing, but I would imagine it, it may be a little bit more accessible than these were, but I think it's just a matter of whether they're, they're putting out there that they are renting them for X amount of time and, and where they're located. Otherwise, it's just very difficult to track.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda, what, I mean, when do you think we're going to have enough information back from Ms. Shadle and other, when are you thinking that we're going to bring it forward?
I mean, my, my goal was to try and start the public hearing process in May and hopefully be done in June. I, I feel some of this is dependent on what Elizabeth is able to discover, working with our finance and treasury staff, and then...
What the legislature does.
Yeah, I also do feel like that throws some things into uncertainty, because it does allow for a much larger range. It does designate what that revenue can be used for, but it seems like it more aligns with what you had requested staff to look at.
Well, it sounds, we were just wondering, like, was it coming immediately? So it's, so there's a little bit of time, that's all. So don't, don't worry about that. We just wanted to make sure. It might need to come back to a small touch at a committee...
Yes.
Once we get that next version.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah.
No, I definitely think that Donna, out of all of us, is ready for this to happen.
Yeah.
Because she's been working on it since she came, so we're trying to get it done this year.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Well, I'm from the legislative perspective, we won't know on ESSB until April, end of April. And then the implementation of that will be more...
And for those of you who couldn't hear that, we won't know from the legislature to the middle or end of April, so that's still some uncertainty. All right, Mr. Percanto.
This is here today for a second study session, just reflecting back our last study session on the budget for the six-year SHR program was back in January. There were some questions that came out of that discussion, so we, we scheduled the second study session. So in terms of kind of an agenda or things I'm planning to discuss today, first, since it's been about six or seven weeks, I did want to update you on just some, some other changes that have occurred in, in the last seven weeks or so that do impact budget, in this case, in a positive way, with some grant awards, and we'll talk about that in a second. And then in terms of just the additional discussion to focus on, just from my notes of, of kind of questions and comments you had last time, touch on Fish Lake Trail a little bit more, Boone Bike Lane Study, as well as 195 corridor projects in general. We tentatively have, I believe, Hannah Lee, next week, so a placeholder for a study session if we need it, unless it's been bumped, but I'm, I don't necessarily have a topic in mind, but just throw that out there in case there's additional questions I can't answer today. That's something we can consider. So first, just in terms of this recent news, council members Wilkerson and Zepone are well aware of this from last week, but SRTC board did just approve three grant awards for the city of Spokane through a new federally funded grant program referred to as the Carbon Reduction Program. The three grant awards that we received, and these, these occurred as a result of a contingency list that arose out of last year's 2022 SRTC call for projects. As additional money comes in, as additional obligation authority comes in, they look down that contingency list for the next, highest-ranked projects that, that meet the funding requirements. So our three projects that were funded were Phase 1 of Fish Lake Trail for an additional $2.3 million roughly. We already had a previous partial award. This, this award doesn't bring it to the entirety of the award request, but does substantially fund that project. And then Phase 2 of Fish Lake Trail was funded for the design phase only, $650,000. And then Millwood Trail was also funded for the design phase only, $237,000. In total, it adds up to a little over $3 million. All three of those projects are already in our program, so they don't introduce a, a new project that needs to be added. What I, what you will see me do, most likely, is within the budget, that Fish Lake Trail to Centennial Trail Connection project is one project in the program. I'm probably going to break it up into those phases. That's more of a housekeeping item, just to help with the tracking of the cost between the two projects and the grant dollars. The vicinity map I have up here is just of Millwood Trail. Millwood Trail is also already in our program. It's been in our program for a while now. We did a trap, we did a, a planning study back in 2017, I believe. So it's already in our program, but just as a refresher of what that is, this is a vicinity map that kind of shows you what the route of the, the Millwood Trail was identified in the, the previous planning study back in 2017. Again, those grant dollars are just for design, but we can launch and get started on that design effort, and then look to pursue dollars down the road for, for construction on this So next, getting into that list of three projects or so that, that you had questions on last time, and in this case, Fish Lake Trail, there's been some recent developments that, that affect it, so I can elaborate. I believe it was Councilmember Cathcart, I think you had some questions on, on project costs for this particular trail, and then I think there's been other questions I've, I've seen as well in terms of the sort of phasing and what that looks like. So this map, what this depicts here, the, the blue line is the Phase 1 of the Fish Lake Trail, and this is all the outcome from the planning study that was just completed about a year ago. So Phase 1 of the project will take off from the, the Fish Lake Trailhead just west of Sunset Boulevard. It'll run along Government Way, along the south side of Government Way, along that blue alignment shown, and then the end of that Phase 1 kind of dips away from the road there, roughly Fifth Avenue. That's, that's kind of the stopping point for that Phase 1 of the project. And that's the one I just mentioned, that we received some additional grant dollars, and I'm, I'm confident we'll be able to move forward and actually get that project constructed, tentatively looking at 2026 for construction for that. It's possible it might go a little bit sooner in '25, but in terms of the grant requirements, it can be as late as 2026. The next phase of the Fish Lake Trail is that squiggly purple line that you see, which is essentially running down the hill. There's a substantial grade difference from Government Way to get all the way down to the bottom near, near the river and Sanford Bridge. So the series, a series of switchbacks that are required, that, that's why you see that route the way it's depicted there today. So that's Phase 2. Again, that grant funding we just received will fund the entirety of the design phase of that project, and then during the next coming years, we can look for grant opportunities to pursue the needed, needed funding to complete construction of that. And then the final piece is Phase 3, and that's the little yellow section shown there. The planning study identified a separate bridge crossing the river. We did look at the existing bridge there that serves Riverside Avenue. During the planning study, there was concerns about the feasibility of widening or adding to that bridge. That is something I do want to look at going forward. I, I think there maybe, might be some opportunities to actually widen that bridge at a lower cost than what we've identified for Phase 3 of $6 to $7 million for a new bridge over a river in a, in a fairly challenging environment there. But that's, again, in a, kind of the future state. What would happen in that, for that Phase 2, once Phase 2 is complete, now you, you still have a route to get to Sanford for Bridge. That connection is there, it's just that you're going to have to use a short stretch of existing Riverside Avenue and cross that bridge, sharing a lane for that short, you know, couple hundred feet. But otherwise, you know, the route is still there, you can still sort of complete that connection, if you will, which is the primary objective of the project. I'll pause there before the next project.
Hey, Karen?
Any questions? Yes?
This is, this is Karen Stratton. As we talk about this fish trail, are we looking at any impacts to the proposed American Indian Community Center project that we plan to place down in that area?
I cannot say that I'm familiar with that project.
Uh-oh.
So we can, we can, we can look into that.
How about, I'll get you and Garrett and I together, Garrett Jones, and we can get you updated on it.
Okay. I can say on the park side, you know, Nick, Nick was involved in the planning study for this. He's definitely well aware and, and kind of weighed in on these, on these route selections down through the park. So from the, from the parks end, they're definitely a, a partner with us and, and, you know, aware of these plans.
Well, I would say this came together quite quickly.
I'm assuming it's not going to be a big deal, but we'll get everybody together to make sure.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So I was just saying, it, Councilmember Stratton has been working on this for quite a while. It came together quite quickly towards the end, so you, you really do need to talk to Nick.
Definitely, yeah. Well, we can circle back, definitely. So moving to the, kind of the next project I had on the list, I believe there's a question about the Boone Protected Bike Lane Study. So that's been in our program for, I believe, roughly two years now. We're intending to pick the study up, most likely, next year. With, since it was initially put in, of course, some things have changed with the downtown stadium that came in sort of right after that. That's kind of impacted that area. Of course, we know now there's, you know, the parking going in across the street in the New Value Village, Village area. So it's internal discussions amongst staff and with, and with my bosses, we felt it was best to let the dust settle with all these changes, changes to where the parking is, changes to how people will be getting to these facilities. My understanding is the stadium will be complete later this year, so we start seeing events. I think once we get into 2024, then we'll have that real, those real conditions of, how's this looking in terms of the parking? How are people getting there? What are the, what are the traffic volumes? And then be able to deal with that, that special event traffic that will be the, the biggest challenge in the Boone... challenge in the Boone portion. As you get over to the kind of Division Ruby Couplet, you know, maybe that's less of an issue, less of a concern.
Are we talking at all about just trying to put more of a trail-type feature through the parking lot there at the arena and the stadium site that could sort of act as that bike lane?
Well, that's, I know that was an early thought, but that's an example of how things have changed a bit with the stadium. It's essentially taken up all that available space. It's such a constrained site that that parking lot's now all gone. So at least for that block of Washington, I'm sorry, from Howard to Washington, at least within that block, there's no longer the opportunity to do that. I guess you could theoretically look at it west of Howard. And what I will say, this is an old slide from the, you know, previous budget presentations. I do expect that when we pick up this study, something else that we will likely do, or what I'm intending to do, or at least have the discussion, is probably expand the limits of work of the overall study to extend it west, at least to Lincoln and Monroe from a study perspective, and maybe all the way over to Maple Ash. Because I know that's sort of part of the bike plan, and that's part of lots of folks' desire and vision is to get it all the way over to West Central at some point. And there's also interest from STA, and it just makes a lot of sense to kind of do the whole corridor at one time.
So I think the worst thing that we could do would be to have a protected bike lane for part of that, and then all of a sudden dump people into traffic. So I know we had conversations with Stephanie Curran prior to this about using, getting some right-of-way from the stadium, but, or the podium. It looks like that's not on the table anymore. So is there any chance that the other side of the street, the north side of Boone, could be used, both directions?
Possibly. I mean, those are the things we'd want to get into with the study, but I think, as I mentioned, I think it'd be, our view as staff, it'd be great to, again, let the dust settle on all these changes, because it's going to change traffic flow. It's going to change the special event traffic, traffic control that we do, getting people in and out. And even that, even that initial change, I suspect will evolve, just having dealt with things like this in the past and other projects and other roles, you know, they often don't get it right the first time, see how things work, and they're going to tweak and adjust their special event traffic, traffic control. So it'd be good to see that play out rather than speculating on how it's going to look in terms of volumes.
Is it even possible to move, bump it up a couple blocks north and put it, not on Boone, but further north?
We could look at that, and studies like this, that's often, you know, a option we look at of, yeah, focused on the corridor, but then is there that, you know, next block up idea? So I have a couple of ideas in my mind that we would look at through here, but it's going to be a challenging area to balance those competing interests and needs, especially right at the stadium. You know, I think as you get away from it, it's maybe a little less challenging, but that's such kind of the center of the earth, if you will, in terms of just that traffic flow in and out. It's going to be a challenging area, and we want to get it right and not impede either of the interests, whether it's bicycle issues in it or all that traffic and use of the facilities there.
So I have some frustration now with you at all. It's just my frustration. When we approved, we dedicated the right-of-way for the podium, the idea was to get this done shortly thereafter, because we were taking away an east-west corridor, and so to replace it with that. And then now I'm really frustrated that while we're doing all this construction, that seems like that would have been the time to do it. So everything's torn up, and we're, you know, we're going to, they're going to put in sidewalks or whatever they're going to put in. It seems like that would have been the time to integrate it with there and have the conversations with them of say, we need to get this done, so modify your design. I get that, it's not you, but I was, and I had talked with Stephanie Curran as well, same thing, all right, while you're doing this, now's the time to do it. So it sounds like that, those discussions have not been going on, and I don't know whether there can be some discussions at all.
Sounds like it's too late.
But it seems like we should be having them, because they're going to be pouring cement and doing pavement, so it might affect it. So I guess that's my request, is that at least there be some reach, rather than just wait for them to do whatever they're going to do, some reach out with some of your ideas in mind, not that we can compel them or that, but just to say, hey, what's the possibility?
I think practically the ideas in mind are really going to be in the street right-of-way. So I hear your point about maybe they're doing fringe improvements. I think they have a little bit where there's an old bus stop pullout, I think that's going away. But I think, big picture, to make it all work, kind of to your point of not having a, you know, protected bike lane, then dumping it into traffic, I'm envisioning something bigger, to be honest with you, that's probably wouldn't be feasible to incorporate in their project anyhow.
And that's totally fair, but even that one block at the stadium, if we could have people off, because that's where you're going to have all that traffic. If we had a protected trail like Councilmember Cathcart, just through the stadium, even just that block, if we could talk to them now about whatever their plans are and do that, because I, my sense is that they're not even considering that, so if we could...
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to go, you know, work through Developer Services folks and see what their site plans look like. My impression, just driving by and seeing their improvements and understanding what they're doing, I think it's just a constrained site, and they're using every available foot they have. So I don't know that there's anything left that can be done.
Could there be something that could go to the south of the stadium essentially and kind of come back up? I mean, I just feel like there's some options there.
On Dean, you mean?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I think to Councilmember Keneer's point, you know, maybe that is a consideration. If we, if it ends up that the options, say, from Howard to Washington are just so constrained, then yeah, I think looking at the next block is a logical, is a logical thing to do.
I'm just hoping you'll have those conversations with them. Again, they may not go anywhere, maybe, but I'm going to hate, and I probably won't be here, but a year from now, when they come back, oh, if only they had done this, and, you know...
There's no probability about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you never know.
You never know. You never know what will happen. But that's the thing, because we have the same thing on Sprague right now, where we were trying to do the bike trail, and the story is, well, we already did the stormwater. We spent all these hundreds of thousands of dollars, so we can't really do it. And it's like, ooh, boy, if we had just synced it up. So I'm just asking for some diplomatic entreaties by you with your engineer-brained, and just see what maybe something's out there.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to do that. No more questions on this one, I will move on. So I think there was a question or comment about Leighton 195. Now, obviously, the last seven weeks have been a heavy discussion. I don't know if it's still, any more discussion is needed or not.
Yes.
You may feel like all your questions have been answered through INGA's impact fee presentations and all that, so I want to pause there first and just maybe get a sort of reset of, you know, what are your questions, what is the interest, if you will?
For every question, there's another question. For every answer, there's another question. And what I've been hearing is this has to be a priority. It has to be a priority. I'm also hearing from the folks who live there that the J-turns are dangerous because of the volume of traffic and forcing people to get over. It's, they just feel like that is not the answer. And I know, I know WashDOT has suggested or mandated that that be something that we use, but it's not working for the people who live there. And so I think more conversation needs to be had about what is actually going to work. The Empire, Inland Empire Way study was a great beginning. We have to consider, I believe, both ways going forward, not just one way. As soon as that's built, it's going to be, it's almost going to be obsolete with all the building that's projected there. So I really believe Inland Empire Way has to be two ways from the get-go, and that we have to take a serious look at the J-turn issue. And we were told by Mike Gribner, before the signals went in on 190, he said, those will last five years, then they won't work anymore. Well, that was three years ago, so we have two years left for those. So it's almost like we're building and building and planning. By the time things go in, some of that stuff's going to be obsolete or needed to be upgraded once it goes in. So I just ask that you think, think 10 years in advance, make this a priority, because we are in dire straits here.
Sure. So along those lines, I guess what I can sort of share and offer, you know, kind of what's going on, what's next, you know, a big thing in that area is the full funding to actually build some of these projects. I think you understood through the impact fee projects, the impact, one, that money's not in the bank right now, right? It's going to incrementally come in over a period of years, and it doesn't fund the entirety of either necessarily individual projects or the even longer lists that's out beyond 20 years. So at the end of the day, we have to find that other source, that other companion funding source, to actually build those planned projects. So, you know, internally, there's a lot of work to get there, a lot of data collection, a lot of kind of pre-planning, if you will, but we do have on our radar, looking at pursuing a raise grant for that corridor, either next year or the following year. The cycle is usually the beginning of the year, so even 2024 means we have less than nine months to get there to be ready for that, so that's why I'm hedging on '24 versus '25. The exact suite or group of projects would still be, need to be determined, but it'd be, you know, a large collection of projects. So what we, what my initial vision is that the entirety, for instance, of the projects added to the impact fee program that are currently in the impact fee calculation that was just passed. I mean, that would be my first starting point, what makes sense to me in terms of a size of a package, maybe another project or two beyond that, because you know there's that kind of that long-term list of things that are needed. So that's on our radar. In terms of that funding, bringing that other funding to the table, earmarks are now back on the table at the federal level. As you guys know, it didn't exist for a decade or two, or at the state level. That's another potential consideration, that, you know, we think we need a lot of partnership with DOT and others to make something like that happen, I would think.
Is the raise grant federal or state?
Fed, yeah.
Okay. And Mike Gribner, before he got promoted, said that he would be glad to work with us to find funding. So I imagine Mike Fruchy would be the person that could help us with getting one...
No, definitely, we definitely see them a partner in anything we do going down there, going forward. We might be the lead, but they'll be right there with us. So on that funding side, you know, that's really critical to make anything happen at the end of the day, without the money to build the projects that don't get built, right? So that's key. In terms of what's, you know, kind of near term or already in our six-year program, the 195 Meadow Lane J-turn is in our program. That was grant-funded by SRTC last summer, so that's fully funded. We intend to get moving with that project and obligate those funds and get moving this year on the design side, tentatively looking at 2025 construction for that project.
Could you reach out to the neighborhood and ask them how they feel about the J-turns that are in place?
Yeah, no, definitely. If INGA came down or not, INGA's here, so INGA's hearing that. So that's the first I've heard of that, so we're certainly, you know, talking to her.
I heard it loud. Councilmember Wilkerson, you heard it too? Yeah.
I'm just curious, if you didn't do J-turns, like, what would be the alternative? And is it substantially more money? Are we talking overpasses? And, I mean, that's just not going to happen, obviously, so...
I'll let INGA weigh in on that, but I can't say an interchange is much more expensive.
Yeah, I would imagine so.
Yeah, so what we're looking at for Meadow Lane, it's kind of a modified J-turn. It won't be exactly like Thorpe. I think it has a J-turn at one end, and then more like an acceleration lane that you can jump into at the other end, so... But yes, to do something that would, I mean, really, the next step up is to completely physically separate all the traffic by going over or under and making an interchange, and yes, that would be very, very expensive.
Would we, just sorry, one last question. Would we avoid a lot of this just through, and not that it's cheap, but through the Inland Empire Way work and then connecting that to the existing, the overpass and where you come down? Would we avoid a lot of the impacts and reduce a lot of the traffic just by making that connection work?
Through Meadow Lane?
From the, yeah, the Cheney Spokane coming down and just connecting right into Inland Empire Way?
It would certainly help on the north end. I think people who live in, like, the existing Eagle Ridge area or the new Summit project that's on the top of the hill, they still will probably tend to drive down through Meadow Lane and get on the freeway, because it'll be faster.
Okay.
You would have to physically restrict them, I think, and channel them to go the other way.
Okay.
I was just going to ask, talk my memory of the J-turn that one of the developers was going to put in when their project was approved or when they go forward. What was that discussion? I'm sorry.
You're probably thinking of the Meadow Lane project. So we had a condition on three of the plats out there that they couldn't move forward until that was built. So there was a coalition of developers looking to get together and fund that themselves, but since we were able to get the grant, which allows the city to take the lead on the project, which is really better, they're just responsible for either contributing the local match, or we can just have them pay their impact fee. Either way, we'll get the project done.
On the Inland Empire study, are we studying the two-way option that allows transit? Are we going to include that in the study?
How much money do we have? Okay. I think that money was intended to focus on the north end, but we can certainly include that as well. I think we probably need to.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we definitely need that. And then on the raise grant, is that having to do with just the corridor, or is that the Leighton Creek Bridge that needs to, or both?
No, yeah, Leighton Creek Bridge would be a separate pursuit in and of itself. We have that, I think I talked about that last time, some bridge-focused grants that we, it would be eligible for raise as well, that it'd probably compete better on the bridge side.
Is there hope on that? I mean, I know you mentioned it, but I've forgotten, because we've been getting a lot of chatter about it.
Maybe. The challenge is, the program that I'm targeting is called the Bridge Infrastructure Program. It's a new program, so there's not much history there.
With the new federal Build Back Better stuff?
The Fed package, yeah. So there's not much history there of, you know, who's being successful? What does success look like? You know, a track record, it look like, hey, you know, that agency got a project, you know, similar to ours or not. So it's hard to say. They did a, it was rushed out, and I don't think they had a lot of applications last year, understandably, because it's a heavy lift. It's like a raise grant for bridges is the way I tell people. It's a lot of effort to put together those applications. And they didn't fund that many projects last year, but the ones they did fund were like the mega projects, you know, $2 billion-type projects. So there's two buckets in that. There's a under $100 million, and then there's an over $100 million bucket. It didn't look like they funded many under $100 million, which is what we'd be going after. Still a big bridge for us, of course, but not $2 billion. So there's not much track record there. So I'm, I guess I'm cautiously optimistic. I mean, the project makes a ton of sense. I expect WashDOT to be a close supporter of it with us as well.
Is it already filed, the request?
No, no, it's not. The NOFO is not out yet for that, for the next cycle. It's supposed to come out this summer.
Have you been in touch at all with Brian Christensen from our federal lobbying team on this yet?
I have not.
Okay, well, do so.
Yeah, yeah, once we get there and the NOFO is out, yeah.
He's our federal whisperer on such things.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, once we get the NOFO out, and you'll see me back here once that comes out, most likely to just sort of brief you and let you know we are, in fact, doing it.
And it's, I'm going to DC to talk to our delegation this coming week, so just if I'm trying to get them, is it $70 million, is that the...
We're doing some planning work very soon, just to answer that question. Our study from 10 years ago had a range of options, and it never said, you know, here's the one option you should do. There was multiple options, there were some preferences in there. At that time, the higher-cost options, which are the most likely and better ones, are 25 to 30, I believe. That was 10, 11 years ago. So I'm going through an effort here very shortly. I expect it's going to be 35 to 50, to answer your question. I just don't have a better number until we get through that.
And what's the name of that, or you can email it to me?
The Leighton Bridge, or the grant program?
Do I know that?
The Bridge Infrastructure Program, so BIP, yeah. Now I'm questioning, bridge investment or bridge infrastructure? I'll get it to you, though.
It's BIP regardless.
It is BIP. I can forward you the, like, the link. There's some general information available out there, it's just the NOFO is not out yet, not expected until the summer.
All right.
So...
Fabulous.
But you're accurate to point out, it's relevant to Leighton as well, you know, when the...
Because that's the secondary plan, is getting people onto that bridge.
Yes, because Lynda Key is part of the equation in terms of having that alternative route, and that leads to Sunset and Leighton Bridge.
I just had a question about the Inland Empire Way. I know when that discussion came out for the study, there was also talk about freight, getting freight off of 195 and kicking it over to Inland Empire Way as well around some funding. So when you mentioned STA, I was a little concerned, like, that's supposed to be the savior route for everything right now, and I don't, anyway, I'm concerned about that.
I don't think the feds want to get it off one night. I mean, that's their whole thing. They're like, no, we want 195 for freight. You get your residential vehicles on the Inland Empire.
But until that intersection, that merge is different, they were looking at getting some freight off of 195 and kicking it over to Inland Empire Way. That was some discussions that we had at SRTC last year around that.
And that, I mean, that whole intersection, not 190, I-90 and 195 is, who designed that? It was like Santa Claus and the elves or something. It's not, it's not safe. It wasn't safe when it was designed. It was, it's like slot cars. So I'm just wondering, and that's a $300 million fix, how is that ever going to change?
That's a WashDOT, that's a WashDOT answer, I guess.
No, you have to come up with the answer, Kevin.
I do, okay.
We had somebody here the other night making suggestions on some signage, which I totally agree with, but I also wonder, have we ever talked to WashDOT about just simply basically shutting that lane down 200, 300 feet before and making that only for oncoming traffic and make everybody else get over? It just seems like that'd be such a simple option, but...
INGA's going to say no.
I'm not an engineer, so...
We have talked to them. People bring this question up to me all the time, because it was closed down for a little while, a few years ago, when I think they were doing a paving work on the Viaduct. And so the people who live in that area kind of remember that and how great it was if you were a commuter on 195. But what I've heard from WashDOT is that during that time, they had significant backups on the west plains on I-90 that the people who, because, you know, you were having to merge down and stay in two lanes as you came down the hill.
Right.
And that caused a lot of problems on the other end that they don't want to repeat. And I guess they see that as more of an issue than the merge point, and they're not interested in doing that. I think it's still worth continuing to ask, though, because I, I don't know, it seems...
Even as a temporary, I mean, just something.
Safety versus congestion is what you're saying.
So the last thing, just to highlight, and INGA, of course, presented on this over the last, last couple of months here, but also on the radar is just that Thorpe Tunnel preliminary engineering work. That's in, would be in the six years, being added to the six-year program this year for 2024 as well. So that's kind of summarizes that nearer-term work going on, kind of in the corridor. So any other questions for kind of Laton 195 in general?
Unless you have a magic wand, no.
I have not found it yet, no, I've not.
I got one, but it's not printing money right now.
Oh.
So that's really all I had for today. Any other questions?
And those were the ones that we asked you to come back. Any other items? Your next step is planning commission?
Yeah. So there's kind of the layout, you know, here we are at March 16th, so I have some PCTS touch in April, initial, second touch with Plan Commission, hearing for the Plan Commission in May, leading to the June approvals.
And we asked you this last time, that if any council members want to make mischief on your CIP, they should do so immediately.
Or not, or not at all, is okay.
I said if. I didn't say they should. I said if they're going to, as opposed to May or June.
I have a quick question for Kevin. That's not related, but when they removed the Magnolia Bridge over I-90, I was at a WashDOT meeting, and they were talking about doing some mitigation and paving Fourth Avenue and Pacific Avenue. Did you have any information on that?
Yeah, so I'm still involved as a kind of NSC liaison on that side of things, and so I work with Terrence Lynch, who you probably spoke with regularly. So we've had a lot of discussions. They've asked us if we'd be willing to add that work to one of our projects, and I've tentatively said yes. They haven't given me the go-ahead to say that, yes, they want us to do it. They might still be able to do it themselves, but they're looking at trying to get it, the work in place as quick as possible, which is why they're, want to see if we could add it. The nature of the work is primarily ADA ramps at corners, non-compliant driveways and alleyway approaches, any bad sidewalk, that sort of thing, along those detour routes. That fits perfectly and nicely with an annual ADA ramp construction project that we do in advance of our street maintenance, grinding overlays. So that was the, they requested, that was a logical offer for me, is like, yes, we could include that. They would, of course, reimburse us, as they do for our utility relocations for NSC, but it's a relatively easy add for us. They have to tell us yes, though. I mean, they're still...
They're still in conversation.
Yeah, they're still trying to figure out how to deliver it. As far as latest I've heard, they're intending to do that, they're just trying to figure out how and when and the logistics of delivering it. So it's possible that we could end up doing that work. And if so, as long as they don't wait too long and tell us in the next month or so, we could likely get those improvements constructed this fall.
All right, so you're released from next week's study session, as is the rest of council.